All right, I'm gonna call to order the Hall School Board meeting of December 4th, 2019. Hi Tammy, how are you? And we'll go ahead with any agenda adjustments of this time?
We have no recommendations.
No? Anyone from the membership? Okay, no agenda adjustments, let's go ahead and to approve the meeting minutes?
I have some, I'd like to offer some amendments.
Okay.
For Hall School Board meeting on November 6th, 2019, can you hear me? Page 3, line 6, and 32, insert 101, Moore Hill Road, following Tiffany Testa. Page 3, line 28, replace the period with a comma. Page 7, line 9, replace spokes with spikes. Page 7, line 43, replace fund with funding. Page 8, line 8, replace Ms. Roy with Ms. Arthur. Page 12, line 14, correct the spelling of of. Page 12, line 40, insert that before would.
Any other adjustments?
I motion to accept the minutes as amended.
A second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Are we current, is that all the meeting minutes that we have to worry about tonight?
Do we, oh, do we need to go through?
Do we have any other further ones, like non-public or anything like that, what we have to do?
I don't see any amendments for the non-public.
Okay. All right, we're all up to date then. Excellent. All right, we'll go ahead and go to nominations, resignations, and correspondents.
I have two assignments tonight, I'll read each one and then the board can take action on them separately, and then I'll give an update to the situation we dealt with today at Hughes. The first one says, "I have generally enjoyed the time spent as a member of the Hollis School District, from being welcomed by Peggy McCallister in August of 1990 as a parent educator, through my 12 years as a 5th grade teacher at Hollis Upper Elementary School. During my time in the Hollis School District, I have grown and flourished. I have had the opportunity to participate in many professional development activities, and I have enjoyed many positive interactions with my talented peers. I have watched a generation of students grow into adults and have now had the pleasure of teaching some of their children. I have always given my best to my students, in return, they have given their best to me. I have enjoyed a rewarding career. I will truly miss the students, staff, and administrators with whom I have spent so many years. I wish you and the students at the Upper Elementary School all the best and you have to come." And that is from Karen Amber, 5th grade teacher at Hollis Upper Elementary School.
I move to accept the resignation of Karen Amber from the position of 5th grade at Hollis Upper Elementary School.
A second?
Discussion?
She's done a wonderful job for us and we'd be so impressed, but we wish her the best as she moves to the next phase of her career.
Many thanks, and many years of service. Okay, all in favor?
The second one, "I am honored to have had the opportunity to work with kind, caring, and gifted educators since 2001. In my position with knowledge at our school, continues to strive for excellence and implement best practices to meet the needs of all of our students. I will sincerely miss the students, staff, and administration with whom I have spent so many years. I wish the best for you and the students who continue to walk through the doors of Hollis Upper Elementary School, and that is from Paula Lockard, 5th grade teacher, Hollis Upper Elementary School. And again, a very difficult one, but very excited for her and her plans in the future."
Move to accept the resignation of Paul Uppert from the 5th grade at Hollis Upper Elementary School, also with regrets.
A second?
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Again, pass our thanks for her years of service.
And then I just wanted to give the board an update. At about 2:30 this afternoon, we had the snow load on the backside of the Hughes roof give way, which is something that happens quite frequently once we warm up. But today that snow load came down and hit one of the skylights, with the one that would be in the lobby if you were standing in the lobby right next to the elevator. And jotted significantly enough to actually, you can actually look out. So Candy notified me, I went over, we had the police chief, I'm assuming the fire chief, as well as Viking roofing come. So the building is fine, the roof is, there's no integrity problems and no issues with that. The vast portion of the snow has actually come off the roof, it does on a regular basis. Fire was there until about 4:30, getting more of the snow off and will be back tomorrow. Viking roofing will be there at 8:00 AM, and what they will do is remove the old skylight. They'll put a temporary solution of plywood, followed by a rubber mending board so it won't leak or anything. And then they will order the new skylight, I guess we replaced what about eight years ago before my time here. The skylights, and there are four others that haven't been replaced, are original to the building, so they're 1978. But Viking inspected all the skylights, the fire chief ultimately decides whether we can hold school and he had no worries or concerns. So I wanted to thank Candy, Lee Custard, and Hinckley, and everybody for all their work today, it was a concerted effort. And they did a great job, and at no time were the children unsafe or were there any worry about the building. I know kids create scenarios that are bigger than they are. We did have to kind of shut down the book fair, the last basically hour of the day just because it's in the lobby. But other than that, you know, none of the books were damaged or anything like that, so.
It's not actively leaking at the moment.
No, no, it's, you know, and it'll be removed tomorrow, so we're comfortable with that. And if you have any questions?
It just sort of proves the point of our facility's report today that stuff is old.
It does, and Candy and some of the board members have received, sent out an email to all families, giving them the update I just gave you so everybody could know. Because it was kind of hard to miss something that was going on, you had the fire chief's car, the hook and ladder, and Amber, the superintendent, and Viking roofing, so people kind of put things together.
That was not in my child's report of the day though, so I'm not sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the principal's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a couple things in school, I know you've already read the report. You know, at HPS, we'd kind of like to remind the board, we just recently pumped a septic system again, because it is another system, and all the pipes and everything are checked, and we're in very good shape. Luckily, we were, you know, have that done on a regular basis. And also entering the cold and flu season, so I always like to notify the board. Buildings are taking extra precautions regarding, you know, washing the tops of desks, doing all the door handles, spending extra time on those so we don't have a massive outbreak of the wonderful stomach flu or something like that, so that's ongoing. At Hughes, I just want to remind the board that Dorian Davis is retiring after 30 years at Hollis at the Upper Elementary School. We wish her the best of luck, but there will be some new transitions up there. Very confident things will go very well. And then I also want to recognize that at Hughes as well, Sam Boudreaux, Betsy Keegan, and Candy were accepted to present at the Learning Forum Conference on December 10th. They will be presenting to a national audience on an activity called Learning Rocks, which is a way to look at learning in the classroom from a peer-to-peer process. And Learning Rocks is something that we do as administrators, as teachers, and really kind of push our staff to get out there. We took it upon ourselves this year to kind of create teams for building principals to go visit other building principals. For two reasons, one, to see practices, but two, as an example, the other day we had an incident where there was an accident. And the first principal on hand was one of our elementary principals because it happened over in the Brookline community. And just having all kids get to know the faces of the administrator, because we try to respond with whoever is closest, to get somebody on site to help fire and police and that. So it's kind of in some ways our practice that we did for instructional purposes, but we've got a really nice byproduct with kids recognizing who are leadership roles, so when they're in a building, they know they have somebody else to go to, you know. And that's it for the principal's report, unless you have any questions, I don't think they have written on.
Yes, any questions and concerns? All right.
You know, I wanted to ask one question, yes, about the unique preschool program that we have now installed this year. How's it going?
Bob, you want to touch base with that?
Yeah, it's my favorite place on earth to visit, going to school there. Yeah, it's going very, very well. So presently, there's four students in the program. Again, they have pretty intensive needs, so they receive a lot of needed support. It's also exciting to see that while they're in an intensive needs program, which tends to be fairly self-contained, there are still lots of opportunities for them to be in the mainstream. So they basically spend a portion of their day in the regular preschool setting and then receive services and smaller individualized instruction in the intensive needs preschool. The staff in that program, they're just absolutely amazing, they're very professional and do an excellent job, so. And if you are, you know, ever at HPS, it is really a wonderful place to visit. You walk in there and are just greeted so warmly by both the students and the staff, so.
Do you feel like the physical plant is fine for this year, you know, expressed for space?
Yeah, I think, you know, space is always a concern in older buildings, but the children adapt very, very quickly, that's the amazing part.
It's just when we started this program, there was the question about this thing, so I was curious.
Okay, if no other questions on the principal's report, we'll move on. We'll open, well, we're a little early, five minutes, but we can go ahead and open the floor for public input, for anyone who'd like to address the board. Just state your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you.
I'm Karen Bamati, address 46 Trail Road. Now, I emailed everyone, I hope everyone saw my email.
Yes.
And I wanted to urge you to reconsider elevating the environmental science position to full-time. And it's not just that environmental science is important for kids to learn, or my two children at HPS are excited about their day, but my experience last year with this educator really showed what a talented educator she was. She kind of took to my child without any special plan, figured out what worked for her, and we certainly saw an increase in standardized test scores throughout the year. And I just really think that when we have such a talented educator like that, we need to treat them fairly and have their position be the same as the other special teachers.
Thank you.
Thanks Karen.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? No, okay. All right, well, if we have an influx of the community here tonight, maybe we'll revisit public input. If not, we'll go ahead and move on to the discussion portion. Does anyone want to take, I'll put it out to the board, does anyone like to take a few minutes to discuss some of the things we've heard at public input relating to the environmental science?
I will cover it during the budget piece, so that's give you a sign of why it's where it is, and then obviously you can make your decision based on that. But we definitely plan to discuss it.
We'll touch upon that later.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's important to point out that the school board deals with positions, not individuals.
That's true, yeah. Positions are our wheelhouse, and personnel is the superintendents and assistant superintendents.
Meaning, can you flesh that out a little bit more?
Well, all things that relate to personnel, like people, HR, things like that.
Like the specific teacher for the position?
Right, right. We build the position, maybe we discuss the requirements and things that we want, and then we ask the superintendent to fill with personnel candidates.
So if we were to increase the position, it would be for the position?
Correct.
Not necessarily for any particular person filling?
Correct, if we would look at the position from a standpoint of educational needs, do we need to expand that, do we need to add, turn it into a full-time thing? Really, the person filling that is not something that we, well, it's not that we wouldn't consider it, it's just not particularly our wheelhouse. Okay, so we'll touch upon that. So let's move right into our discussion, our presentation on whole-child education, Assistant Superintendent Bergschock and Assistant Superintendent Thompson.
Thank you. Do you want to enhance a little bit?
Yeah, I can kind of slide around.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
Ooh!
That good for everyone?
That's good.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay?
Sure, yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll give you a little bit of the history. Whole-child focus, that's been a focus in SAU 41 for years, teaching the whole child. Our focus has been, as you saw in our governing board meeting, the child in the chair, and how do we make decisions? We want to make sure that our decisions are made for what's in the best interest of the child in the chair. And so, a few years ago, different principals or different buildings came to me with requests for different needs, whether it be for funding or professional development or whatever, in this realm. And in the SAU office, we felt it was really important to take a step back for a moment and make sure what is it that we are doing as an entire district? And are we making sure we're moving forward in a logical fashion that made sense for the child in the chair and the district, and where are we heading to, rather than making a ton of decisions in isolation? So, over the years, you've seen specifically this board, individual district goals with social-emotional learning or whole-child focus. And so you've seen snippets of the work that's being done at HPS and Hughes, but you haven't really seen the whole enchilada from a district point of view, so here we are.
You know, in order for us to talk about whole-child focus, I think we need to back up for a second and talk a little bit about emergency management. And I would argue that the Hollis and Brookline schools are amongst the safest schools in all of the state of New Hampshire. And there's been a number of activities that we've undergone in the last few years. One, all six of our schools have comprehensive emergency operations plans, and these plans are actually standardized across all of the buildings. So what this means is when you are a substitute teacher in HPS and you walk into the building, you'll see what we call our seven responses. And you'll notice in the library wall, they're right there, they're located right next to the door. Those are the seven responses to any emergency situation that may occur. You know, that same document is in all six of our buildings, so if you're here at HPS and then you decide you're going to sub at the high school, you're going to see the seven responses. And that was a lot of effort on the part of building principals and safety committee members to come up with standardizing hundreds of pages of that document. Additionally, we have a district-wide safety committee, and this is very unique because our safety committee, which has representatives from all six schools, also has representatives from both towns for police, fire, EMTs, and also Homeland Security. And this is really an action-oriented group, you know, we look at all sorts of scenarios. What would happen if we were to have an emergency situation here after hours, you know, when there's a rec basketball game or on weekends? We also use it as an opportunity to debrief incidents. So let's say there were a gas leak at the high school during morning drop-off, you know, how did we respond to that incident, how could we improve our outcomes? We're really at the top of our game. We also have highly-trained staff who have done hundreds of hours in active shooter, incident command, threat assessment. And that's in addition to a lot of the trainings that we have hosted and done here. These are staff members going out and becoming highly-trained on their own. We've also invested, as you are aware, hundreds of thousands of dollars into infrastructure. That's cameras, that's protective film for windows, that is controlled access, a locking door system. And also this past June, our work with emergency management really hit home for me. We were asked to present at the Emergency Preparedness Conference in Manchester. This is a conference that's typically attended by emergency service personnel. And the Hollis and Brookline schools, we were the first school to actually be asked to present. And what was wonderful about this day is, you know, we're getting ready to present, and Scott Lambertson, who's the head of Homeland Security for school safety, comes into our session with other members of Homeland Security, and they sit in the front row, and Scott says to the members of his team, you know, "This is Hollis and Brookline, they are the standard in the state of New Hampshire for safety." And that really means a lot, knowing that Scott and his team go into hundreds of schools every year. And so the message that, you know, we have given our staff is, yes, we are at the top of our game when it comes to emergency management. I don't think you're going to find a school that does it better. However, it's not enough, it really is not enough. All of the work that we've done with emergency preparedness is very reactive. It's predicated on something has to go wrong in order for us to exercise all of the training that we've done. And so if we really want to be proactive when it comes to safety, this is really where we need to look at social-emotional learning and the whole child. We have students in our classrooms that have anxiety. Some of their anxiety is so bad they can't even come to school, with depression, with mental illness, with aggression. We really need to make sure that we are educating the whole child. It's a lot bigger than physical safety. And that's where social-emotional learning and the whole child comes in.
So, back to a couple years ago, we developed an SAU-wide committee. And this, I just changed the order if you're following along, just moved the slide up a little bit. But the work that we did was, we wanted to develop a mission statement. We wanted to identify what our purpose was and what work we were going to be doing as a group. And then we wanted to identify an agreed-upon definition of what social-emotional learning was or whole-child education, so that when we spoke about it within our entire SAU, we all had a common understanding of what it was that we were talking about. And then we felt like it was really important for us to develop a community resource list, because that's in the moment, you have a school counselor or a teacher or a principal and who needs to find a resource for a family. And we wanted that to be an immediate something that we could provide for them. So we developed a very comprehensive list of resources from anything you can think of that was readily available for any of our employees. We also wanted to identify all the wonderful things that we were doing. We knew we were doing so much, but we wanted to identify what it is that we're doing in each of our buildings. Are they effective? Do we continue doing them? Do we add more? Do we refine what it is that we're currently doing? What tools are we using? And then, in order to figure out, are these effective? We created and we implemented a teacher questionnaire so that teachers could answer if they were observing certain trends, if they felt comfortable working on certain characteristics in the classroom, and if they needed any support with teaching some of these. And then from there, we identified focus areas for the district. The mission statement is right here for you. Our mission for SAU 41 is to promote a relationship-centered culture that supports academic, social-emotional, and physical well-being in a nurturing, learning environment. We aim to develop resilient and productive members of society and be responsive to the diversity and needs of students, staff, families, and community. It's a pretty comprehensive mission statement, since it's like we're going to accomplish everything. And that's what really drives the work. And here's our definition. For social-emotional learning, it's the process by which children and adults develop the awareness and skills to make positive decisions, deepen their relationships, and reach their goals. So we took a look at definitions from all over the place, but we felt that this definition from Castle really spoke to us and was true to what we felt it was. And Castle is a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, and they sort of defined SEL over 20 years ago. And they've been driving the research, guiding practice, and informing policy. So it's not just something brand-new that just came in five years ago or a couple years ago. So they've been certainly doing, driving all this work for many years.
So when we met as a committee, one of the first things that we did was, we went to the research. What does the research say? What does the data say about social-emotional learning? You know, we knew from some of our own internal mechanisms, things like the behavior, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, you know, we have our own local data, but looking nationally. And one of many pieces of data we looked at was the 2013 American Colleges Health Association survey. And some of the data is up here, and I won't go over all of it, I'll highlight just a couple. So this is a survey of 100,000 college students. 84.3% felt overwhelmed by all that they had to do. 60% felt very sad. 51% felt overwhelming anxiety. So that is the majority of the 100,000 students felt overwhelming anxiety. And 46% felt things were hopeless. You know, and so you need to think of this almost as in like the classic Maslow's hierarchy of need. If you don't have your physical and emotional and psychological needs met, how do you reach learning, self-actualization? And it's just, you can't. And so, you know, this research, along with several other pieces of research that we looked at, helped to drive some of the work that would come out of the committee. And so additionally, when we look at the why, what's the need for the work? We'll highlight, you know, the list of why was comprehensive, but we tried to narrow it down for the purposes of this presentation. I think one of the things that we found most interesting was SEL programs, they enhance children's confidence and increase their engagement. And one of the things that we looked at was, schools that have really comprehensive SEL programs actually see an increase in academic performance. So sometimes you hear the argument, you know, "Why are we focusing on social and emotional learning? We should be focusing on academic achievement." Well, there's research that says, actually, if you focus on quality social and emotional learning for children, you're going to actually increase academic achievement levels. And similarly, effectively, children are able to effectively manage their thinking, attention, behavior, all things that lead to better levels of achievement. Next, children with greater social-emotional competence are more likely to be ready for college, succeed in their careers, have positive relationships, and better mental health. Again, you know, colleges are reporting that kids come to them with a lot of academic skills, but a lot of those social, emotional, or soft skills, they don't have them when they come to college, and as a result, they're falling apart. And so preparing children in a pre-K through 12 environment allows them, provides them those resources that they're going to need when they move on to post-secondary. In addition, school-based SEL programs can improve students' competence, enhance their academic achievement, again. Those with strong social skills are more likely to make and sustain friendships, initiate positive relationships with teachers, participate in classroom activities. Again, you know, one of the things that educators strive to do is build relationships with kids, and that's really what SEL is. It's about building strong relationships with kids, kids building relationships with kids, and kids, you know, developing social skills that they need. And then lastly, social-emotional skills serve as an important protective factor in the face of negative life events or chronic stressors. So again, there's a ton of emerging research about the impact of trauma on the brain. And what we know is that trauma can actually rewire the brain and can create pathways that make it incredibly difficult for students to learn. We basically put, when students are impacted by trauma, they're putting their brain in a more primitive state that does not allow them to learn at high levels, it impacts their ability to have relationships. But what we do know is, it is not a dead-end street. When you experience trauma, there are always ways to rewire the brain, and quality social-emotional learning program can rewire the brain when students have experienced significant levels of trauma.
So as I mentioned, Castle's sort of the leader in this work for the past 20 years. They have the Castle Wheel, where it breaks up into competencies, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. We've added optimistic thinking, personal responsibility, and goal-directed behavior to some of the focus areas for us. But self-awareness, identifying emotions, accurate self-perception, recognizing strengths, having self-confidence, responsible decision-making. This is something that can be used across the board, not just social-emotional learning. Identifying a problem, analyzing a situation, solving the problem, reflecting on it. And then ethical responsibility, self-management, impulse control, stress management, self-discipline, self-motivation, goal-setting, organizational skills. So these are all skills that are incredibly important to the overall performance of students both while they're in school, but beyond in society. So what we did, as I mentioned, we asked all of our teachers, our nurses, our school counselors, our principals about all of these standards. We defined the standard, and then we asked the question, "How often are you, are students in your class demonstrating strengths in this area in the last month?" So not any student in particular, but just in general. And then, "How comfortable are you?" And then, how comfortable are you with teaching these skills? And so the responses that we received were self-management and self-awareness were the clear areas that we needed to focus because we had some high numbers in the never, not demonstrating that at all, or low numbers in the frequently. So we decided, and that was, there was no difference, we tried to break this down in just the K to threes, or just the middle school, or just the high school. And it really didn't matter what small subset you looked at. The results were surprisingly very similar. So self-management and self-awareness were the areas where we both felt like we could offer the most professional development, but also our students needed support in that area. So it seemed like a really good place to go to for this year. So that has been our focus. Our SAU-level committee has identified those two factors as what we're going to focus on for this year. And I'll let Bob take the next one.
All right. So where do we go from here? So, SAU 41 District Goal, all six of the buildings have a whole-child goal that they developed at the beginning of the year that's consistent across the buildings. Also, we just had our November Professional Development Day organized by Gina. The day started with a presentation from the Choose Love Foundation. The Choose Love Foundation was started by Scarlett Lewis, and her son Jesse was one of 20 students murdered at Sandy Hook Elementary School. And that, I think, set a good tone for the day in terms of her message, which is, you know, we need to create cultures of caring within our schools, with each other. We need to infuse fun into our school day. And there was a lot of positive feedback from that presentation. But there were three strands that we were focused for the day. The first was whole-child education. Then we had instructional best practices of essential standards. And then the last part of the day was, again, talking about school safety. So now what is going to happen is, after two years of having a district's committee reviewing research, identifying certain standards that we want to look at, now the work goes to the buildings. And each of the buildings has been tasked with setting up a social, emotional, whole-child committee where they will begin looking at curriculum for their grade level, for their buildings. And this was intentional, just knowing that there's, you know, different developmental needs at each level. So for example, a lot of social emotional learning activities are a good fit for a morning meeting in an elementary school. But they may be a good fit for an advisory program at the middle school, or a cap block presentation at the high school. What we wanted to do is, we wanted to allow the buildings to sort of choose the path that they wanted to go, but to do that with close monitoring by the district. So what we will have is, we'll have frequent check-ins, we'll have one mid-year and at the end of the year, just to see where the work is, sort of an opportunity for us to hold each other collectively accountable to ensure that, you know, we're adhering to the principles that we set out to at the beginning.
I just want to add to the Professional Development Day, the three strands. For the first time, this PD day was focused so that you were required to obtain some professional development in each of the three strands, because those were our three main areas for our SAU goals. So we wanted to make sure that everybody had some exposure to all three of those. So some of the work in the whole-child education focused on feet on the ground. What do those lessons look like in first grade? What do those lessons look like in fifth grade? And, you know, beyond just the committee members, the two years of committee members, you know, we've done a lot, but now it's, everybody needs to be part of it. Because it's not one person's responsibility, it's everyone's responsibility. It's identifying in morning meeting that self-awareness of your personal bubble space and utilizing the vocabulary. So even though the lesson might look different in kindergarten, in first, second, fifth grade, et cetera, the vocabulary is consistent. So there's, so that it triggers something within the child. You know, we did some of this work when we looked at math curriculum a couple of years ago. We wanted to make sure that the language was the same. The technique might be different, but students were getting confused because we were using different vocabulary. Well, what is our decided vocabulary for whatever it is that we're teaching? And so I think that's really key here, because we need to understand the language. The kids need to understand the language, so when they transition, they understand what lessons they're taking with them and how that's going to change as the child gets older and develops. And then the teachers that are receiving them have an understanding of what those students know from their years prior. So that is it. That's where we are. Are there any questions? Thank you. That's awesome.
Any questions related to the SEL program?
I really value this work. A question that I have, thank you very much for the presentation. I can't wait to hear more and see more of it implemented. Was there any student questionnaire or family questionnaire similar to how, the questionnaire that went out to the teachers? Because I'd be interested in students' perception of how they would rate those skills.
No. So, it's a good question. So, there are laws in the state that prohibit us from doing that without obtaining permission from every parent. But also, we felt like, we wanted, we didn't want the students to answer questions about something that maybe they weren't sure of. We wanted to understand if the students were demonstrating that they could apply these skills, because they might know about them, but if they're not applying them, then it's still a problem. So, so we felt like, just obtaining that higher-level view of, what are we seeing in general?
And I'm curious if families are seeing the same, you know, if it aligns at home, that families feel the same way about where there's gaps. And I particularly appreciated the tie-in to, like, that this is a proactive rather than a reactive approach. And in my experience as a parent, we've had some experience with see something, say something. And I don't know if that is language. Is that the language that our schools are using? And is there anything more that you can say about that piece of it? About reporting and kids taking care of each other and encouraging that with kids? Do you know what I'm asking about?
Yeah, the See Something, Say Something was an initiative a few years ago from the Department of Homeland Security. And I know that we were one of the first schools to, I hesitate to use the word pilot, because really what it was, was a series of posters. And I know at the middle school at least, I can't speak for all the other schools, we did a couple of PSAs where we talked about the importance of kids coming forward when they see something, this idea of we have a collective responsibility to each other. And that, you know, was a more proactive way to prevent things from happening. And we would see, after we would give our little PSAs or put up posters, that there would be an increase in reporting. The consistency across the district, I can't really speak to that.
Okay. Yeah, because I actually, like, found that language outside of the school, and I wasn't sure whether or not it was being used in the schools.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
It's high time these problems have been quantified, identified, and asserted as matters of fact, not just name-calling. We have a very tense and intense society, and our children are suffering. And it is high time that we begin to address this, you know, cogently and in an organized, respected, respectful fashion. I appreciate what you said.
Yeah, I really like the proactive piece to this, because you turn a large ship by little changes way ahead of something that could be way down the road. So I really like the fact that it's not just reactive. We're looking at the student, and really treating them as individuals, not just, you know, feeding them math and reading, and that's it. Right? We're really, you know, it's really refreshing to see.
You know, some of the barriers for the committee is, it's not my job, I'm here to teach X. It's not my job. Because there's a, you have a particular training, and teachers weren't really trained in this, in teacher school. And so how do you get that buy-in? And so Bob and I last year attended a conference, and that's when we listened to the Choose Love presenters. And just for both of us, it clicked, like, here's the urgency. We do so well with safety, but now it's internal safety. How do we, how do we work from within, within our schools, within the child, within the teacher? Like, you can't argue with that. It seems to me very compelling, that we do have to be more proactive.
I mean, I was just sitting there thinking the same, something similar around adoption to this. And, you know, folks who may have been used to be doing the same thing, a very specific way, when now we're kind of presenting a very new, to my mind, refreshing way to look at teaching, right? And so from your sense, do you sense that we would have a good adoption rate? Is there people struggling with this? It's kind of a cultural change, isn't it? For like a teaching cultural change?
It's definitely a cultural change, but as I said, there was such a strong desire by so many folks across the SAU at large to learn a little bit about this, learn a little bit about this over the years, that at this point, there's not a lot of convincing. It's really just, how do we make it a little bit more standard, but still allowing for that personalization so that it's just a little bit more buy-in?
I guess the only thing that I wasn't too sure about is the slide that you had, the, it looked like the survey, frequently, very frequently, occasionally, never. How is that actually, how does that, I'm not quite sure how to process this information, because if I was, if I'm a teacher being asked this, how would I say, well, social awareness, let's say, how would I say, well, 51% of the time, they're doing it frequently or very frequently, and 35% of the time, then occasionally? How is this, I'm not sure how this is packaged.
The rates don't add up to 100%, and so we don't, we try to understand better what these numbers really mean. So are 51.7% of the teachers in the survey answering that their students display social awareness frequently or very frequently? And 35.9% said the students displayed occasionally, and 66% say they display it never? That's not possible. So I'm not sure how to understand the table.
Sure. I'm trying to, we did this so long ago. Well, I can tell you that what we did was, we asked, we defined the question, or we defined the topic, social awareness. And then the question was, how often are you observing this? And then you had to pick one answer: frequently, very frequently, occasionally, or never. And then the results were analyzed, and I, so this was done in committee and put together by a subcommittee. So now that you, it was very clear, the never is what we focused on, so that's the area that I focused on. You're right.
I mean, is the never column that you have 66% of teachers answering that their students never show social awareness, that's not possible. I don't believe that. That must mean something different than that. Two-thirds of our teachers never see social awareness active in their classrooms, it's not possible. So it must mean something else, is my point. It can't mean that.
Well, it's their response.
So that brings me to the comment I wanted to make, which is that one reason, you know, you mentioned that educators have been trained on just, you know, teaching the math, teaching the social studies, teaching the material, and less about the whole child and the emotional context. So one reason is that when you touch on someone's pain, you feel pain. And there's only so much you can take, year in, year out. So the staff will need help too. Because once you start processing other people's pain, it hurts.
Yeah.
And that may be one reason why you get some of these weird answers, is it may be that you just, it's just so hard to grapple with them.
Yeah, and I would say that, for me, was what made Choose Love so compelling, because it wasn't a student program, it wasn't a kid program, it was a community.
People program.
Yeah, people, about building a culture of care. You know, and I would argue too, I think a lot of this is intuitive for the vast majority of our teachers. It's the reason we get into education. It's all about relationships and caring. I think what this does is, it lends itself to, as Gina pointed out, building systems. That's what we need more work with. We have a lot of really great resources that are having a tremendous positive impact on kids. We just need to make them more systemic and share these resources with the various teachers.
Mm-hmm. Good.
I could certainly provide an update as to what this means. I mean, there was...
It made sense at the time.
I just, it didn't jump out to me that self-management, self-awareness really jumped out. I mean, depending what column I was looking at, I could see it, and maybe other columns, not so much. I wasn't just, wasn't entirely sure how to process this information and what it was trying to tell me.
I'm actually wondering if never is inappropriately titled, and if never was the, how comfortable are you teaching this? If that's what that column was? Because those are the lowest, and so they were, the teachers reported that they were the least comfortable reporting that.
I see.
And then, I think, the other two columns, really, there were four questions, there were four options, and it looks like we lumped frequently and very frequently, and then threw in occasionally and ignored the...
If you could...
I will get back to you on that, yeah.
If you could give this slide a title as to exactly what it is telling us, that would probably help me anyway, because I'm just slow.
Yeah, I think lumping, we may have lost the logical...
No, absolutely.
But the comfort teaching is different than reporting observed performance by the students. That would be vastly different kind of answer, so.
Right.
And may send you down a different conclusion.
Well, I think, to us, it made sense, because, so, in that first column, 44.1% and 38% were the lowest percentages. So those were the lowest areas of frequently observing this behavior. And at the same time, not by a whole lot, but our teachers felt less comfortable addressing those topics in an instructional way. So that makes sense.
Of course, one of the yin-yang problems is student privacy, right? So how do you address what you're seeing in a particular student, the child in the chair, when, you know, there are very specific barriers between adult and room?
And the other thing I'm thinking, if that is the case where they're actually responding to the level of comfort that they are teaching in some areas, that may suggest a kind of block to adoption, maybe? Because, or maybe they don't have the tools to feel comfortable doing it? So it could be developmental, like, maybe we need to get some more professional development in that area to make it easier? Or, because I'm worried about barriers to adoption, basically.
Right. That is why the focus this year has been on those two, providing the professional development, so through staff meetings, through book reads, through that Professional Development Day, through PLCs. That's where all the work, so we could focus on a lot, but if you're spreading it so thin, it's, you know, you're not going to do it very well. So that was certainly a need identified by the teachers, so that's been our focus area for the year.
Anything else?
It ties into that, an aspect of this with grief and trauma processing, that can be very challenging for teachers, and that this model would have it be, that that's not just for guidance, right?
Oh, no, it's the board.
Yeah, that the child's closest contact is the best person for working through that with them. And, so yeah, I'd be interested to hear more about what programs we're offering to the teachers to work on that.
Yeah, and certainly if there is developmental, you know, professional development, that the board can help, you know, we'd be happy to continue a conversation around that. Okay. Let's move on if we're done with whole child. Let's go ahead and do presentations, building remediation in SAU barn facilities.
In your board packets, we provided the board with two, what I would call, eventual slideshows regarding the facilities remediation and the SAU barn. What we're looking for is not necessarily all tonight, is feedback, so that you can digest it, look at it. Because our next phase of this moving forward would be to hold public forums, and we want to make sure that we're covering all the items. We've been doing this for about 10 months now, so sometimes we take some of the pieces for granted. And it really, you reflecting back on it and say, I understand what you're looking for, but the explanation could be clearer, that type of thing. So I wanted to run through it tonight. First one is the facilities piece. And just to remind you, Davie is our architect, Eric Reiner is the... And just to remind you, Davie is our architect, Eric Reiner is the chair of the Hollis Energy Committee, Mike Levin is on the Hollis Budget Committee and the Hollis Energy Committee. John Penny is an engineer with Penny Consulting Service, myself and Kelly make up the SAU components of it. Dick Henry is our energy consultant, and TME is our school board rep. So we really feel we have a, a wealth of experts this time, because what's changing is we're not just focusing on energy this time around. We have a lot of infrastructure, and that's why the architect and the engineers around mechanical systems are so crucial. The, um, history of the Hollis School Buildings, the primary school was built in nineteen fifty-two. And last year, we just took out the last electrical box from nineteen fifty-two. Part of H-Step, we removed that.
Framed it under the wall.
Yep. There were not any upgrades until nineteen seventy-eight, or major upgrades, and then we did our major energy upgrades in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Our current structure, from a basic building structure, is in excellent shape. It's a solid, well put together building. We have numerous infrastructure elements found to need upgrades, previously identified on either the five-year rolling CIP or during H-Step. The Capital Improvements Plan or H-Step. And the budget committee a year ago had asked us to look at kind of packaging all these together, so that's what started this discussion. Last year, at annual meeting, the vote is funded, a warrant article, so we could do this study to bring it forward this year. We're also looking at, right now, the interest rates are very much in a borrower's favor. The last bond sale from the state of New Hampshire was at two point six percent. Most lease sales are around three percent right now, and we could do either a bond or a lease, depending on what the board, the budget committee, and the committee decides. We believe it will be costing us less in the long run to do everything, than to do everything peacefully. And we also believe that approaching it this way, we could avoid any school disruptions, you know?
Andy, did you mean, when, a, a second bullet from the top, no major building upgrades since seventy-eight. There's clearly a sixty-seven ring.
Right.
But seventy-eight came later.
Right, but no major building upgrades.
Since nineteen seventy-eight.
But we did one in nineteen sixty-seven.
That was before nineteen seventy-eight.
I, I understand.
But it was built in fifty-two. We had a major upgrade in nineteen sixty-seven, so. So from sixty-seven to seventy-eight, we didn't have a major upgrade.
After nineteen seventy.
This, this seems to suggest that we haven't touched the building from fifty-two to seventy-eight.
All right, well, we can add a sentence.
So it's, it's really no major building upgrades since sixty-seven, not seventy-eight.
Well, I, I think we'll rephrase it, because it's how you look at it, but I agree with that point. The project objectives are a safe, reliable, and efficient school building for many decades to come. An affordable CIP plan going forward that has minimal impact on budgets. And then we do the same history, but this time for Hughes, built in seventy-two. Probably the same point there that we'll work on, Rob, is no major building upgrades since nineteen ninety-seven, but there have been upgrades, so we'll work on that. We had, for those who may not have been in the community, a mold remediation issue in two thousand ten. And, um, we had energy upgrades in seventeen, eighteen that were necessary.
EOL is end of life.
Right. The basic building structures are in excellent shape. Again, we're looking to combine the five-year rolling CIP with H-Step, and we believe for the same reasons and objectives. What we do, as of eleven twenty-eight eighteen, we had a million four seventeen in, uh, in our CIP items for the five-year plan. But we didn't include the major items left out of H-Step, which are air handler three, the nineteen air source heat pumps for the HPS classrooms, and the interior lights. The new items of concern, as we uncovered a few years back, is just our kitchen septic grease tank upgrade, and our sprinkler system here at the primary school, we have no fire sprinkler system. And we have also researched cost revenues and updated for our remediation projects. We have a, a small amount of asbestos that's encapsulated, but over time, we'd like to remove the rest of that. So you see, Kelly has provided you with a five-year projection from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. The next piece, it says items, talking about items including these projects. The committee, which I thought was a, a very strong component, asked us to break it down into critical, significant, and important and valued items. So we could really demonstrate to the voters and the citizens exactly what is critical. You have at Hughes, the air handler three that we've talked about. We need to replace the unit ventilators, which are your classroom heating devices. We have to insulate a number of beams that were never done over the years. And then to recommission the Munter's unit, Munter's unit, it was the unit installed for the mold remediation in two thousand ten. By recommission, we want to get it recalibrated. One of the things that we deal with is, we don't have a building management system, so when we lose power, it's up to custodians and everybody to get everything back in sync. So we believe we're not taking as good advantage of that unit as we could. At HPS, we'd like to.
Could I correct you? We have a building management system, the Munter's unit was never attached to it.
Thank you.
I just, I just want people to know, we, it's pretty reasonable, but there are major components that never really got integrated with it, and that's one of them.
Was it not integrated because of its age, or it just happened to be that that's how it was assembled?
It has, partly it's timing, partly the Munter's unit was installed on an emergency basis, this was a Sunday plumber situation. The sixth grade was held in the gym.
Yeah, it was a standalone unit to address humidity in the lower floor.
It's a dehumidifier.
And it, I don't think, at the time, the rest of the systems in the building was able to, you know, talk to it.
Talk to it.
And integrate with it.
Thanks.
At HPS, we would like to remove the oil tanks and replace them with propane, putting both Hollis Schools on propane, which would be the same fuel source as the town for buying power. That would encompass a boiler consolidation as we convert to propane. We would do the nineteen remaining classrooms with air source heat pumps. We would add a sprinkler system to this building. We would finish the fire panel, which is in phase two, and we would do interior slash exterior doors of the building, doing those by priority areas by the architect, is what is a fire code issue, what is a safety issue, what is a, a heat loss issue? And he would prioritize all of those. Significant items are items that now have limited life or could lead to catastrophic failure. We do need to do building maintenance system upgrades at Hughes. We would like to upgrade the phone and the intercom. We would like to replace the dry land catch basin. If you were to leave HPS at the back and you were in the cop lane, you basically go over that catch basin every day. And that's heading for failure, and that needs to be taken care of. And then we would do a septic grease trap upgrade, right now, our current kitchen does not have that ability. Important items that provide needed improvements and/or efficiencies, obviously in both buildings, it's interior lighting. Gym and the locker room, when we're ventilation, we have, um, our present ventilation system exceeds what would be expected for a gym and a locker room, so we're actually taking out heat in that environment that were, I would say, oversized when they were put in, and it's very inefficient. And the engineer believes we could do a much better job with that, while at the same time saving some heating dollars. The control system at HPS would become wall-mounted, again, the exterior, interior and exterior lighting. We, we say interior lighting is important simply because we have lights. And we could function tomorrow if we didn't, but moving to LEDs would probably reduce our electric bill by another fifteen percent over, over time.
And maintenance costs also, because those lamps get replaced far less often and all that.
And that, that actually was in our H, original H-Step, and was a significant piece to our performance numbers and savings numbers, right?
Yep. And values are items that provide long-term improvements, to insulate the exterior EFIS panels, insulate above the cafeteria, and the kitchen exhaust upgrade, all at Hughes. Here, it would be an abatement, asbestos abatement, removal and repair, and create a door near the first grade classroom and library. And just so you know, where the abate asbestos is, as I call them, the fishbowl windows in the first grade. The, the, I'm going to use it, putty, I would call it, between the window and the cement is actually what the asbestos is. So it's a very small amount, it's totally encapsulated, it's absolutely safe, but I would like to see the, the fishbowl windows go. I think from a safety, security, we would still work to make sure there was natural lighting in those rooms, because it's critical. But at the same time, I personally don't like the idea that somebody can walk down the hallway and see exactly what's going on in, in each of those classrooms.
Nice questions on this slide?
Sure.
I can also wait until the end, and just.
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Okay. I just am wondering, I know that the, the costs are on the slide behind it, but it, it, what's the like, or do, maybe you don't know. But I'm, I'm wondering what the general breakdown percentage-wise of critical versus significant versus important.
That's on the next.
Oh, it is on the.
Your next.
Yeah, okay.
But the, why we do this is because you, some of you in the audience is going to have that same question. So by just listing something under critical or significant, since we know the numbers, we could help alleviate that and still keep the next slide as well and go more in depth. So I appreciate that. The breakdowns, critical elements from a dollar perspective, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-six at Hughes. And at HPS is one million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-four. Just to give you an idea, the sprinkler system is probably about half of that, a little less than half. So that's your significant item. That's a massive undertaking, because remember, you have to have a dedicated water tank that is only for the fire sprinkler system, and that would have to be dug and loaded on property. So then you're talking infrastructure and some pieces like that.
And pumps and power backups and everything.
Yep. Significant items at Hughes is sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred, at HPS is twenty-eight thousand, four thirty. Important items at two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred at Hughes, and two hundred fifty thou, fifty-five thousand, four hundred HPS. And valued are a hundred and thirty-two, two at Hughes, and thirty thousand in HPS. So if you were to package them all together, at Hughes, we'd be looking for nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred eighty-six. At Hollis Primary School, one million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-four. And again, if you take the sprinkler out, we're basically asking for the same dollar amount at both buildings, and that's the difference. The combined total is two million, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, eighty dollars. We have been advised by the architect to use a ten percent contingency, which is two hundred and eighty thousand. So right now, would, I think at least one more discussion to go. Project total for the infrastructures at the schools is three million, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred. One thing I want to be clear about is, we're going to pay for all this one way or the other. So whether we do it now in the form of a bond or keep it in the CIP, these are not items that can just, you know, be forgotten. They're not extras or niceties, most of this is building infrastructure.
Yeah, and I, I would add to that, that when we go down the CIP route, when you're in that year, whatever that total is, is going to get loaded into the operating budget as part of our budget. So you tend to, for the taxpayers, you tend to get this, this like spiking situation. Depending on what year you're in and what needs to be done in that year, bonding smooths it all out over a longer period of time. So it, it's not quite such a roller coaster for folks.
And some things can't be split up into smaller chunks, you can't readily do half the sprinkler system this year and half the next year. Some of these are major hits that have to be done all at once, and they soak up half the bond.
And when you're talking about critical items, if we wait for them to fail, it's going to be a Sunday plumber. And it's going to cost exponentially more than it would if we just put it in there and plan it, yeah.
You're not reacting versus planning.
See, your whole child stuff is coming on us as well, we're going to be proactive.
The other thing to keep in mind, we've talked to Davie, the architect, several times over the years that he's worked on H-Step, about what kind of numbers replacement costs would be for new. You know, the building's nineteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-seven, why do we need to keep working with it? Part of it is that during H-Step, we found the buildings are solid, their structure is solid, foundations are solid, they're worth keeping. And we don't want to scrape them off and throw them in the landfill. And the other is that the current rule of thumb for new schools is three hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot. So that comes to, both schools' replacement costs, just round numbers, is forty-nine million dollars. So when you see this three million.
Each or combined?
Combined.
So. You're right, so, and that's given the square feet and the number of kids we service, it's a, because there's a relationship there in terms of how many square feet we have to have per kid. So when you see three million of this and the previous, the energy project was two point eight, so let's call it three, that's, if we were able to renew our buildings for these three million dollars, the previous three million, and the additional items we'll talk about in a minute, you know, it's still a bargain compared to new schools, especially if we had to house a student somewhere else while we built. You know, it, it's an important, you can't have this stuff fail, and you would either have to replace it here or build new, and building new is very, very expensive.
Other questions? What I, what I would ask is, you know, as you digest it over the next couple of days, would, would, you know, feel free to email your feedback, I'll get it to the committee. Because our next step is to go to the budget committee, do the same type of presentation for them. Once we've done that, our committee will come back together, take that feedback, we look at our proposals, how we're going to tweak them or whatever it may be. And that's what the presentation will take out to the public forums as we prepare to go to annual meeting.
Do you need it, do you need the board to take a position on the final number?
At, at some point, I think we're still have time, I'd, I'd really like to get to the budget committee, give them their opportunity. And then we could use December for both the school board and the budget committee to kind of look at a final number.
For the, for the valued, um, I'm, if, if it's possible to add a, a bullet under each of the, maybe saying a little bit about how, how it adds value, how each of those things add value? I guess I'm just thinking, speaking to, to the public, how, for buy-in.
Or at least have speaking points that you can, you can kind of bring folks along instead of, you know, you could either, you could put it on the slide or just have like speaking points.
Because I, I mean, I, I think it's easy to see how we need to do significant and critical. And then I'm, I'm trying to, you know, think as a member of the public of like how we might question important and valued as needing to be in there when looking at all those numbers.
The thing about the items, you're right, just, just to, for now, the items that listed on important, just like Andy said about the lights, are not items that are on the verge of failure. They're items that are functioning fine, but they're, they're functioning at a very inefficient cost levels.
Yeah, and I just don't see that here yet.
Right, so, so since the critical and significant items tend to be related, except for the lighting, but they tend to be related, it would be an opportune time to take advantage during construction.
Yeah.
To get these cost efficiencies. The valued items, I just want to add, EFIS has to do with those concrete stucco-looking panels on Hughes that are under, between windows. And behind them, there's no insulation. So it's been determined by our building analyses that adding insulation there would save us money in the long run over the life of, the remaining life of the building, because of the, uh, we wouldn't be leaking heat.
Right, and I wasn't clear on when it says valued, long-term improvements, are we looking at cost improvements? Or are we looking at other types of value that are being added?
No, I think those are both great points, and the other reason we did it was, if ultimately the board, the budget committee says the dollar amount is this, at least we now know how to get to that. You know, you would know if you were saying, okay, three million's too high, you got to come down to two point five. Well, this is what's going to go, and you're going to work your way up the other way, because obviously the critical and significant are what we're going to find first.
Well, to your point, it doesn't actually go, it just doesn't get into the bond, right? These things are going to stay on a CPI, with a CIP plan, whether they're, we get sucked into a bond and we address it now, or it gets put into the, back into the CIP plan. But it doesn't go away, the costs will remain, and it, we're just basically kicking the can down the road. The other thing I'd like you to point out, I'd like to point out, we may need to take a second look at the interior lighting. Because, do you know offhand the total cost for interior lighting, roughly?
It keeps shifting, right now, I think it's, we're, we're over a quarter of a million, there are.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
It's four hundred, it's gone up, yeah.
So here's the thing, we know the buy, based on the. So here's the thing, we know the buy, based on the original H-Step numbers, we know the buyback on that lighting project is one point seven years. Rolling that into a fifteen or twenty-year bond, I don't know that that makes a lot of sense. We might want to find or consider some other means that we just do it somehow. I'm not suggesting I have a solution right now. But with that buyback, I think, you know, we're going to, we're going to hear similar things from the budget committee on that. Does it really make sense to roll that into a fifteen-year instrument when we should be able to pay it off in one point seven years?
It's just that there are so many other things we're paying for also. One of the values of, the yin and the yang of a bond or a long-term loan like that is that today's users are not paying for tomorrow's utility.
Right.
So when you have a very large ten, fifteen, twenty-year loan, our kids are in and out of the building, we've paid interest, it's true, but we haven't paid the full amount. And the next round of kids help pay for that as well because these are LED lights, they should last a very long time. So that's just one of the factors.
I think it's worth spending a little time and putting it out there and let's have the conversation with the, with the right stakeholders. In the end, if we say, yep, all well and good, we still need it in the bond because of many other reasons, but at least we're having the conversation, right?
No, I made that note because that, that might be an article that you pull out and look at just as a separate lease item.
That's right.
And you do a three-year lease.
That's right.
So it's, you know, you get that quick payback. So again, I think that's why we're here tonight, to get those type of suggestions, get to the BudCon, get those suggestions, and then we can make that informed decision.
Right, and when we're thinking creatively like that, we're, you know, we're ensuring trust in what we're doing. We're showing that we're looking at things in many different ways and, you know, there's many, many ways to do things, right? And we just have to find the one that suits our district and the community the best.
I'm going to switch over to the SAU building, which is owned by the Hollis School District. It was built around nineteen hundred. You own the building as a school board and you rent it to the SAU, so you rent it to Hollis, to Brookline, and to the Cooperative School District. We currently use five thousand, six hundred and twelve square feet in the farmhouse. Our rental revenues are retained in building maintenance trust per annual warrant. So every year that rent comes in, it gets funded into the maintenance trust and that's how we fund our maintenance projects. The current conditions, we've had significant increases in mandated administration and technology over many years. We have sixteen full-time equivalent staff and we are asking for a facilities director because again, when you look at this whole project, we believe, I believe, that we need to have somebody who this is their area of expertise. You know, looking at all six buildings across the SAU, including all of our property, the playgrounds and all of those pieces. So that is in the SAU budget this year. Many of our offices are former bedrooms, stair landings and pass-through spaces. We are served by two one residential bathrooms. Kelly was kind enough to take a picture of the bathtub because I'm going to show you all of it, we've got to see it. And we store all our cleaning, this flies in there because there's no other place to store it. You're talking a hundred-year-old home, there aren't closets and things like that. We have a conference room that comfortably holds about four, but most meetings have about ten, so it's very packed and cramped. And storage space is very limited. One of the reasons this all got started a number of years back with Rob guiding the ship is because we're mandated to keep so many records. And the records naturally went to the attic because our basement is dirt, so we really can't store records there. So a big part of this is to get all of that storage items, payroll, New Hampshire retirement, all those things that we're required to keep into a proper storage area. So the barn will provide six additional offices. It's a multi-use conference event space. It's protected long-term document storage in the basement. It'll be set up to be properly vented so that we can do long-term storage and have a, I would say, a very large storage area for many years to come. And part of what we're looking at is we did look to see, you know, if we ripped it down and built brand-new, all we retained in the historic building, it actually came out that restoring the building is cheaper than ripping it down and building something new, which doesn't, isn't always the case. The farmhouse will gain improved access and security for the existing offices. The long-term storage documents will be removed from the attic and placed in the new basement of the barn. The bathtub on the second floor will actually come out and become the hallway to, so you won't have to go through somebody else's office to get to your destination. And we'll also get increased storage space. The financials around the barn project, it's about one point four million dollars, that's for everything that'll go on, the reconfigurations of the bathrooms, the barn, new foundation, storage, all of those type of things. We are looking at a warrant article in March two thousand and twenty. We are going, unless the board tells us differently, we believe we should be proposing as two separate warrant articles. So the community has a right to choose the SAU and what they want to do for the schools and not lump them all together. We are still researching bond versus municipal lease. A number of years ago, the budget committee had asked to look at municipal leases, that's how we did H-Step project. And there are some benefits to the town from a debt standpoint with the municipal lease rather than a bond. So we'll be listening to the budget committee on that as well, whether it be ten years or twenty years, we're not absolutely sure. Obviously, we don't want to take a loan out for longer than the useful life of the majority of the pieces. Since most of this is structural in the barn, it'll be there for many, many years to come. We anticipate increase in rental revenues. Our current revenues are twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy. Later on tonight, we're going to discuss a little bit about a long-term lease. My thought on that is in year one, when we, if we are fortunate enough and the community supports the barn, when we add that square footage, we use our current square foot basis for rent for that first year. And during that first year, we do the same process we completed two years ago, where we go back out and do another commercial study site of what rents are running and then change our rent to reflect that as well. But that gives everybody a budget cycle to prepare, so none of the districts are getting hit all at once. We also anticipate a substantial increase in real estate market value. Our building is valued at eight hundred and thirty thousand in two thousand and thirteen. We believe that would go up. Please understand that as part of this process, we would go back to the deed. What we'd like to do is separate the recreational field from the farmhouse, which may lower the value of the farmhouse. But we always want the school district to maintain that field for many generations of children to come if we ever had to sell the farmhouse.
So would that get deeded over to the, well, still the school districts, but it would, it would become part of the HPS property?
It would be a separate parcel that is governed by the school board, but separate from the farmhouse.
But stands on its own.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, potentially twenty, thirty years down the road, you may decide you want to build on that parcel too. Because again, if you're trying to, if land becomes a problem like in some communities, I don't know if it will here, but in some communities, at least you have a known parcel where you could build a building. And to Tammy's earlier point, a group of students could go to that building, you finish the project, rip down one building, you build the new building, and then you tear down your last building.
Right.
Okay. Alternatives to the warrant passing. So if it doesn't pass, we can simply delay. Costs will increase over time. The barn, the barn foundation and frame are probably going to mandate some sort of removal in the next few years if we can't do something with it. And that doesn't mean we would just rip it down, we'd probably see if there's a barn person out there, there usually are, that want to come in and take this material. We would have to, at some point, move to a storage and rental off-site for all our documents because they do need to move. And we would reduce critical staff crowding.
Andy, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Excuse me, about the document storage rental. Because these are, probably contain a lot of personal information, are there certain standards that the document storage facility would have to meet and does such a facility even exist in the area?
There are storage facilities for all different types of things. I don't know what the cost are those, and so I'm not saying like the sixty-dollar rental for the, you know, pull-up trailer and put all the boxes in there.
I got a ten by thirty, let's do this.
Exactly. So we would have to go out and research that. The other problem is we would, we would almost need two levels of storage because there are records now from students and teachers that are probably fifty, sixty years old or older. Those aren't going to be accessed as much, but believe it or not, many of our records are required to be kept for seventy years.
Seventy, by RSA.
Yep.
That was going to be my next question.
Because what happens with disability is that when you retire, when you come, certain, certain disability rights come due, you have to prove blah, 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 and you have to go back to original records like you would have to go back to first.
And you could invest in scanning all those records, but we're talking monumental projects. Now, I know that the police department in town has done it and I believe the town has done it, but the number of personnel that they have employed as opposed to the SAU over the years, so you would be looking at a very large scope of a project. We're also required to maintain a child's IEP until they're, they reach the age of maturity and they have the right at that time to come and get their files if they so choose, or at that point we have to destroy them. But that, that means in some cases, we've, we've got a series of students' records for five, six years while they reach the age of maturity.
Are current and future records being digitally preserved or do we still need to keep paper copy?
Many of the items from the business office are still paper copy. You know, I mean, again, we can move to a different format, it's just would be very cumbersome and we would have to outsource it at a massive cost. We don't have anybody who could do that from a staffing point.
What hap, what happens in the case of a fire?
They burn. I mean, it's.
There's a spare panel in the SAU building, so we're good.
Okay.
No, it is, there have been situations where town halls in New Hampshire and other places have burned and you lose your record. You try to recreate them, a lot of times there are duplicates, other places, you know, like personnel files, a lot of times you have, for active employees, you have their HR file at the, at a building level for quick access as well as one at the SAU.
Sorry to push this. Have you guys looked at the actual cost of the scanning project?
We actually looked at it a couple of years ago and we didn't have the funding in the SAU budget for the personnel to do it.
So it would just be?
It would be fun.
A human resource that we'd be talking about for time?
Or some sort of service.
Okay.
This is labor intensive, anything that's labor intensive is expensive.
Yeah, well, I just didn't know if it was, you talk about outsourcing, if it was somebody that we would.
The thing is, you can't like use volunteers or just attempt services because of the confidentiality.
Correct, that's why I was saying if you had to go to a professional service that did this kind of thing.
We could, we can look at and research that again. I know we did it a few years ago.
Just curious, thank you.
Thank you. Offsite relocation, we did do a study in two thousand and fifteen and all the commercial rates were much higher than what the Hollis Board charges the SAU. There are very few properties in the vicinity of Hollis and Brookline that really are commercial spaces. To give you an idea, there was one on Selt, I think it's Marimack.
South Marimack, the manufacturing site there near the.
Just because it was a commercial building, so Bob and I looked it up, it was listed for one point two million, so our renovations are kind of.
But it's a factory, it's not turnkey.
Yeah, no, it's not.
You get a hollow, you get a hollow, you know, building.
With the concrete.
There's just not a lot of commercial spaces for business. The last thing is, you know, the barn from the gentleman who came out, this is his profession, what he does, and it's also his passion, it's a very unique barn. It's basically right around the Civil War. It was very well-built. One of the things that makes it unique, which I have no idea, I have not any knowledge of barns, is our barn actually has a staircase to the second floor on both sides of the barn. So you can come in and go to your right or your left and go up to the second floor, which was not very common at all. So he was very intrigued by that and felt that the person who built it must have had some athletes.
Will he buy it for one point two million?
He will not buy it for one point two.
Nice.
We also, in your packet, provide you some backup that, which will, shows you the floor plans of the current status and our proposed plans, the cost budget and the commercial real estate study. I'm not going to run through all those, but I'm going to let you look through those, see how the new space comes about. And then on the last page, we had October seventeen, two thousand and nineteen estimate. That has gone up slightly, just based around some fees that have come in, and that's where we come to our one point four. Before we get to the presentation, in our next meeting, we'll have the update on where the cost is increasing as well.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do we not need a sprinkler system as part of this renovation?
Typically, in our setting, it's not required, just the same reason we, the architect did the study and we won't need an elevator either.
Okay.
Okay, because it is strictly a, an office building. You know, and again, one of the things we struggle with in the town, I think, as everybody knows, is just the ability of water. You know, and to put another strain on the well for another system when this will give us so much better emergency access and egress.
Have there been any discussions about, we are adding considerable square footage to this property, I'm thinking electric and heat and things like that, just general costs for that building will go up. Do we have any, have we had any discussions about considering maybe some solar panels on the, on the barn? Something to possibly?
Offset that.
Offset the added consumption?
Technology is evolving and Eric Reinhardt and Dick Henry are researching the ability to, I want to say, I'm not exactly sure of the technology, but we would have a device on our building that would access the solar panels on HPS.
We make more energy at the primary school than we need to run the building. So they're hoping that they can figure out a system for soaking up some of that into the SAU building.
Do we have some?
Capture and redirect essentially.
Yeah, do we, do we have some line item in the project plan with numbers, with dollars?
It's still very much being under discussion.
Because?
It's not clear.
We certainly wouldn't want to do all this and then right after we're done doing it, come back with another bond for energy.
Well, we've also talked about what I'll call a handful of solar panels on the south side of the barn would meet the needs of the SOS heat pumps and mostly electrical there, so.
The committee might want to think about adding a general line of energy or something there and come up with a round number. And we can continue talking about it and maybe we take that number out at the very end, but, you know, to just keep coming back to the community for energy upgrades and changes.
Eric Rehert is the chair of, just FYI, Eric Rehert is the, is a local dad, he's the chair of the Hollis Energy Committee. He is, his own private business is energy efficiency, solar installation, solar everything. So, and Dick, of course, Henry is way into all of that. So we've got a lot of firepower in terms, on the committee in terms of these energy efficiency and, and solar mechanisms, so, just so you know what the qualification.
Keep it in mind.
Absolutely, no.
Agree.
Now, strike while the iron is hot. And I do like the fact that we're thinking of making them separate bonds. I mean, just initially hearing it makes sense to me because I think it gives the community enough granularity to either accept both projects or say, mm, we're only going to do one this year and we're going to pick the one. It's their schools, they get to, they get to choose. So I think that gives them, you may have more people supporting one with the other and to bulk it together, I don't know, it may not sit right with folks.
And just, so the board understands is, we're discussing if they were both to pass, it might be a benefit to package them for the sale to the barn market.
Right.
Which won't be a problem. We're also discussing whether one would be a bond and one would be a lease. Because when you are talking about, well, I'll say, a physical structure like the SAU, bonding that for fifteen, maybe even twenty years, you'll get a much better interest rate because it is a physical structure and it's not going anywhere. Where many of the items we're doing in the upgrades here are machinery and that as well, so it would qualify for a lease, so.
What would be the requirements there? Because I know any bond has to go through a March meeting and all that. But raising appropriating, right, and once you have it, are we subject to, can we make those funding decisions afterwards? Like would we break it up into two bonds or lump it together?
No, the warrant articles would be written specifically telling the. No, the the warrant articles would be written specifically telling the voters whether it was going to be a lease or a bond. So they would know what they're voting for. At the meeting, we would make it clear if they were both bonds, that they may be packaged together for the bond sale.
I see.
Because that would be advantageous for the voters from a standpoint of the interest rate and payment rate. Now, the other big piece is just from an annual meeting piece. If you do them as two separate bonds, you need to have an hour of voting on each bond. So you're looking at at least a two-hour meeting because the polls have to be open on a bond for an hour.
Right, right.
And you also need a two-thirds majority of the citizens in order during that vote to pass it. The lease, which we use for H step, is a majority vote and can be done, as it was done at the annual meeting a number of years ago, as a as a card ballot. So there was no formal ballot vote. So those will be decisions that we'll be making as a board, along with consulting the budget committee to decide how we want to approach those.
So so if they were both to pass, and so it would be sufficient just to disclose that if they were both to pass, we would seek possibly grouping it into one bond?
If they both were on the warrant as a bond.
Right.
If that is the strategy that bond counsel recommends, which we would have that prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Legal counsel would weigh in and say, this is how I think it's best. Because the other thing that happens in a bond market, sometimes having two separate bonds is a good thing because they're sold as these big, huge pieces. And people buying those portfolios may be interested in a one point four million dollar municipal bond. They don't necessarily want a four million dollar municipal bond. So a lot of times, it's one of the buyers out looking for to fill out their massive portfolios because these ladies and gentlemen who are buying these packages are buying, you know, huge bonds for investment purposes.
I see. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next in your packet, I just want to, again, we put in the the annual meeting calendar, just so you could digest that. And again, for Hollis, we're having our annual meeting on the eleventh, where there's no date of the thirteenth. And those dates pretty much dictate all our public hearings and all of those pieces. So we'll keep you posted with more of that information as we get into December because we will have the public hearing. And depending on what the board wishes to do, we have, on occasion, held a joint meeting with the budget committee and taken our positions there. On another occasion, we have taken our positions before Budcom, and our representative has brought our votes to the budget committee. It all depends where we are in the process. And that brings us to the budget. We are going to be heading into round four. But what I wanted to do was kind of give you that that broad overview. So in your packet, there was an Excel spreadsheet. And if you went to the very last page of that Excel spreadsheet, you would see that our operating budget, standing right now, is eight hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars above last year, or a seven point one percent increase. The vast majority of the increase are mandated costs related to services we have to legally provide students. From a budget standpoint, they are considered outside guidance. Hollis has the formula, when it's a mandated cost that we have to pay for, they take it outside of guidance because it has to be paid for, and that way you're not taking funds away from regular ed or hurting one group of students versus another. And I've always commended on them, but I don't know many towns where this happens, and I think it's something that Hollis developed and should be very proud of it. In terms of the, if we passed all the warrant articles and everything of that nature, that increase would actually go down because we're not going to be proposing the design development for the study we just completed. But at the same time, the two pieces you don't have on there would be the two bond numbers that would obviously increase that budget. So it's it's a, I would say, a difficult year because we are seeing mandated costs rise. So we don't have as much flexibility to give you the, you know, the opposite end of the spectrum. The co-op this year sees students aging out from mandated costs. So they, before we even open the doors on the budget, we're seeing about a six hundred thousand dollar decrease.
Wow.
So it, you know, and eventually, probably four or five years from now, these increased costs you see are going to move to the co-op, and they're mandated. And you'll see that, what I'll call that, short windfall until the next group of students arrive. Okay? So that's the big picture. Now, going back, as you know, we go through four rounds, and I want to thank the parent for the email on the environmental science. So I'll I'll start there and give you the rationale, and then you can give me input. Because if you tell me to put it in, I'm I'm okay with that. I won't, I don't mind spending money, but by nature, I'm very conservative. So on the environmental science, when you look at the wrong one, it was in there, and it had a cost associated with it of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred. That was just for point two of the position. The piece is that's point two is the benefits package because the position doesn't carry the benefit. So it's a substantial increase. Now, when I look at it from an educational standpoint, it's about four or five years ago, we increased that position from point five to point eight. It used to be one person split, being a math person and the environmental science, and we didn't feel really justice was being served by either one of those pieces. Right now, that position services all our students. So if you added the point two, all right, we would get enrichment for students at the primary school, and we would get that teacher being able to attend professional learning community meetings. Those are the two academic benefits. I struggle with that because all our students are getting all the required elements offered. Now, in a few years, I anticipate that we'll see a shift in what goes on at Hughes for environmental science. And at that point, it would be very logical to increase that position to one point oh, and the person would be working in both buildings. Because Hughes does not do environmental science on a regular basis here. It's more a springtime, a series of activities. They have a wonderful gentleman who comes in and has been doing it for many, many years. So and the reason why I wasn't necessarily keeping that position is because there were a number of positions that we are funding. We desperately need another para for the kindergarten, as our enrollment has gone up there. And if you know anything about working with the little ones, it's anytime you could have another set of eyes or hands, it's much appreciated. One of the things that we pushed for this year, and has been cut two years previously to this, was the library assistant at Hughes. We have one at the primary school, we haven't had one at Hughes, it was cut a number of years ago. This is the first time it's made it to this round of the budget. And then the other piece, we're asking for ten thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars for a directed sub nurse, as we've discussed. Needs for our students have gone up tremendously around nursing services, and this would allow us to have seven nurses for six buildings. And that directed nurse would be assigned to the building if somebody was out sick, if there was a student who needed to go on a field trip that needed a nurse required. So again, that nurse was cut last year as well. The other piece is, as you are now aware, we have in this budget a pre-K teacher for eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That was not in last year's budget. We legally had to put the program in this summer, so we have had to fund that from a variety of different line items. But that is a new position for next year for intensive needs. OT services are going from point five to one point oh for fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight. We have a new speech teacher coming on board to meet the needs of students at eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. That is offset, though, by contracted services. Right now, we provide those services to students by bringing in an outside vendor. So we're gonna spend the same dollars, but that person will be Oz all week and give us many more hours of service. We are increasing a para, an RBT para. This is somebody who's trained to gather data because students who are in need of these para assistants typically are year-round students for us. So this is just simply increasing a present para to a year-round employee so that they can service the child's needs at summer school, and that is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three. So from a personnel standpoint, in regular ed and special ed, we are increasing a number of things. We are also reducing two para professionals, and that's just based on following the students. Right, there are students who are aging into the co-op, they are individuals who would be one-on-one para. Oftentimes, they'll follow the student right through the next grades, just means they won't be working in the Hollis district. They'll become part of the co-op budget. So from a standpoint of when I look at the overall budget with our increase and the magnitude of positions that we need, knowing that from an academic standpoint, I'm servicing all my students, that's where my struggle comes with increasing the environmental science. Now, the other piece that has tended to happen quite a bit, this part-time position has then moved into a full-time role. So I hesitate to increase it based on an individual when I know the position is funded to meet the needs of students. I just read to you two retirements for teachers. First priority is people in house. You know, the person who started a few years ago at point five in the environmental science here is now a full-time special ed math teacher at the co-op. So it it's one of those things that when we get good people, we we don't see them typically leave. We're a district where people like to work. I can't guarantee they'll be in this building, but they will probably still be with us.
So assuming that, like you just pointed out, we are, we just approved two retirements here. And assuming we're gonna backfill each position, most likely not at the same rate, so there's gonna be some savings there. Are there opportunities to cover the thirty-seven, six hundred out of that change?
Well, the the piece is you don't see the savings in year one because.
Right.
I retire, let's say, I I'm retiring at eighty, and a master step five is sixty-five.
Right.
The board, through the CBA, owes me my buyout package, which is approximately somewhere between twenty to twenty-three thousand dollars based on my years of service. So that first-year differential just covers that buyout package.
I see.
So it's really washing you one.
You don't really see it until year two?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
And you you did mention one thing, I'm sorry, finish.
Well, I was just gonna say, what what, but at the same time, if we, the best candidate was bachelor's step one, you're gonna see a more significant savings, and there may be money.
Right.
It's just, we don't dictate who the principals hire or the hiring committee. They they have, they just simply hire the best person.
Right, that's the way we want it.
Right.
You did mention for that additional point two, we're going to get, you said enhancement and something else.
Enrichment.
Enrichment.
And that the teacher would be able to attend professional learning communities.
So could you talk a little bit about the enrichment part? Does that suggest that there'll be more instruction time than we're currently doing? Or what 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 makes up the enrichment?
Typically, when we do enrichment, it's during the student choice time. So some students would opt to maybe not go to recess, things of that nature because if you think of the master schedule, my group of twenty students are scheduled all day long. So they don't really have an opportunity to free time. So my enrichment would be have to be sometime when they were free. So that's gonna be their lunch. Maybe on occasion, they might arrange a special during different days and that. So and some of you who had students go through Hughes understand the the enrichment components and what they're able to offer. And it's it's not as extensive as, say, at a high school level because you don't have the the choice in your schedule.
Right, so is it fair to say that environmental science would reach more kids through the enrichment path?
Every child at Hollis Primary School gets environmental science.
Already gets it, all right.
So what this would mean, all of us would get the minimum, and some students may be able to choose going there instead of lunch.
And doing a little more.
Correct.
So technically, through that enrichment path, there is more hours of instruction, but it would be for for students signing up to do to get it.
It's students signing up, and as an instructor, you would never know the number of students that were going to sign up.
At any one time?
At any one time.
Okay.
You mentioned that looking forward if it ever changed at Hughes. What prevents it from changing sooner to take advantage of a full-time environmental science role? Because if the person who's doing it, great job, but it's a springtime thing, could it be that?
Well, you'd run into.
That would go over to Hughes as well, then, maybe the fall.
Well, you would run into some scheduling issues, just simply with the transition between the two buildings. In terms of the curriculum standards at the upper school, they're, I'll say, less flexible than the primary school. As you move up the ladder, everything gets more refined. And as a result of that, they do their environmental science through specific springtime enrichment so that, you know, one week Bob's class is going with the gentleman, another week it's Gina's, and it's by their grade level, per se, and not all students necessarily get a full load of environmental science there. Now, it's something that if we could, down the road, make change so that could continue, I think it'd be very beneficial.
Okay, thanks for the description.
I have a question about the substitute nurse position. So it's seven nurses for six nurse spaces. So on a day that all six nurses are present, wow, what are we getting, yeah, what are we what are we getting out of that other nurse?
On those days, all schools are required to do mandated hearing, vision, scoliosis, all of those type of tests. So what we would do is coordinate for that nurse to be available to come into the building so that the school nurse could go through her required pieces that she has to meet. Then there are also, just like anything we got in school right now, a wealth of paperwork.
Yeah.
There will always be something for that nurse to do.
Is that something that a nurse that isn't full-time in the building is able to provide as a service?
She could provide it, if but if you're in and you know that paperwork and that student better, I would ask the what I'll call the substitute nurse to deal with more the child who's walking in sick.
Okay, so she may be in a building with a nurse that's present also.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Also, Andy, my sense.
She or he, sorry, I said she.
Right, so my sense has been that there aren't so many days when every when the buildings aren't in need of a nurse substitute, that one of our biggest problems has been high getting nurse subs, and sometimes we've had to go to services. And even then, we don't get all the buildings covered. I don't think that scenario is as.
That's what I'm wondering too, statistically, how often.
And I just wanted to add that part of the the difficulty is that our nurses are required to attend field trips. So it's not that the nurse isn't present at work, they're present, but the work happens to be in another place for the day with the students. So as a result, we need to then have somebody on site at the school, and so that just causes.
Last year is a hundred and ten days of nurse sub need to.
Across the six buildings.
Across the districts. The other piece too, you know, having met with the nurses to discuss, you know, how would we utilize this position? It goes back to whole child. The nurses have indicated a strong desire to get into classrooms more often, to do wellness, mindfulness, other health-related topics that right now they just can't get to.
It was great when the primary had two nurses.
It was very.
So so the idea would be, you know, if there were, you know, a day where all nurses were in, you know, we'd do some advanced planning to get some of the our regular nurses into the classrooms for those activities.
The other benefit that's qualitative is that a nurse coming in from, say, a temp agency or maybe from the community, a professional, a lot of, you know, students don't necessarily know that person, especially for little ones, especially for children who have really significant chronic illness. The emotional connection, that that just the familiarity with a face they've seen before, who knows their their records, who knows what they need, under what circumstances, has a meta-value that's hard to quantify, but it can it can have medical outcomes.
I have one more question about the environmental science piece. Now, I'm forgetting what the acronym was, but like the meeting with the other teachers.
Professional learning community.
Yes. So if the, if the current position isn't, that's not included, is the position, how are they collaborating currently with other teachers? Or is that possible as the current position is?
It is difficult. I won't say it isn't, but when you're looking at environmental science being a separate, unique entity, it's offered to all students, and what I'll say, at a baseline level where everybody's getting the same experience, in some ways, that teacher would benefit from being at PLCs to learn a little bit about the child.
I agree, absolutely.
But on the other end, sometimes, I have, I found when I was a teacher, it was often best for me, for me to make my own decisions about a child, because how somebody performs an environmental lesson outside in nature might be totally different than the person like me who liked math in the classroom. You know? I mean, so again, it doesn't necessarily always align, and I think it's, I mean, I'm not going to lie and say it wouldn't be a benefit. It would be. I just don't know if I can justify $37,600 for that benefit.
Okay.
I just want to add to the PLC discussion. So PLCs are focused on grade level, taking a look at data and the instruction around the data, and how to improve, you know, performance or understanding or whatever. So it's not necessarily ever so pertinent to what, so the specialists in general don't attend the PLC of the grade level in general. I mean, certainly there'd be times when that would be appropriate, but it's not something that occurs regularly for
With the other specialists, alright, okay, thank you.
I mean, Andy, to your point, the teacher who sees the child's behavior out in nature is bringing something into the building that none of the other teachers can see. The current point eight position does that. It's not missing. This environmental science at point eight takes every student into whatever the lessons are, including all the outdoors, and brings it back. How does that teacher, whether it's the current staff member or someone else, how does that very valuable information, in my opinion, because kids are different outside, they are different when they're touching trees and they're doing math, how does that person share that knowledge, that experience with our kids back into, with the rest of the staff? So the staff members who might be discussing, maybe not in PLC, or maybe casually in a PLC meeting, or any other of the different ways that the teachers have a chance to speak, you're talking about, you know, little Johnny is really struggling, we're not able to reach him with this, or he really loves that. The outdoors teacher has something to add that's different. The gym teacher has something to add that's different. And that input to the committees is, probably has whole child value.
Oh, I'm not
But I just think we have to
Yeah, and those conversations take place at the regularly scheduled RTI meetings.
Yeah.
Because you're right, everyone has a different vantage
I say she because we have a current staff member, who's one, but so the specialists do attend RTI meetings, they do
Yeah, that gets to what I was trying to understand.
RTI is different than PLC.
Right, and they
RTI is response intervention, and PLC is professional learning communities, and maybe you could talk about
It's all based on what, it's all based on what the needs are. So if we're looking at a group of students, and, you know, let's say Bob says, I'm going to look at these five students, and these are the people that need to be present for that conversation. So it's really focused on the individual child and what he or she needs, or you think they might need, or, you know, so
So this point eight position currently can contribute to discussions with other staff members about individual students, or groups of students, or subsets of students of some fashion or another. It's not the PLC meeting where that typically happens, is what you're saying.
And just two things to point out, and then I'll move on to the rest of the budget. I mean, we're still trying to get to the guidance number set by the budget committee. So if we put in $37,600, it's probably going to come out someplace else. And I would also note that it's not necessarily, when we're looking at personnel, just my decision. So if you look at the difference between round one and round three, we still have the kindergarten para in, because that's what the principal of the building believes is the greater need to service kids. Just like Candy let the library assistant STEM person go the last two years. She's now saying, you know
She's holding on the stuff.
She just seeing what's happened is Gina's put together a tremendous science program. So, you know, we have science, we have environmental science, and now we spiral up through the grades all the way to grade 12. So there's a greater need because kids are doing more hands-on labs, and what would happen is that para would become the person so that the teacher can arrive and things are ready to go, and we can conduct a true experiment. Now the teacher can go back because we need supervision, the para can clean the lab and get it ready for the next group. So Candy's worked out a pretty good model that I think is going to work really well, and when she's not doing the STEM, she'll be in the library, doing, our libraries have turned into Learning Commons, and they're much more technology-friendly, and we're doing so much more research that, again, another person in there will assist the librarian with doing, I'll say, some of the mundane tasks on research. And again, we still have this month and next month, probably before we get to guidance.
Yeah, we've got another round, yeah.
Right, we have another round. We may have to make more cuts, but ultimately, if the board thinks the position should go in, you know, I'll put it in. I just know, and I think Rob can attest to this, that we've worked really hard to develop the relationship with the budget committee, and as a result of that, our budgets have been passed fairly regularly
Yeah.
With little input. And I think if it was any other year and I didn't have approximately, you know, over $4 million of mandated services, that it would have made it in. So I'm not saying we won't see it back again next year
Yeah.
Because I'm not saying it doesn't have value. I'm just, from my point of view, it's that balance between the education and the dollars.
Well, to your point, it's not the first time we had to forego some things, and the principals, we've had to say no, and then they bring it back the following year, and then this is the yes year.
Right.
It's always been a bit of a balance. But we do have one more round
Yep.
Like you said, things change.
We'll go to the budget committee, I think it's next week. So Kelly will bring me back a lot more data, and Carol will get their input as well. I mean, Carol can raise it with them. I mean, because the other thing they could decide is to put it outside guidance.
Yeah.
It's been known to that, but
Yeah.
I just think, you know, again, our taxpayers have been so supportive, and we're also asking for two major pieces. So to me, it's kind of a year where I have to kind of balance everything.
And it doesn't keep the board from continuing the conversation post-March meeting, and that sets up another cycle of planning and stuff, and priority setting and things like that. So this could be a first of many conversations related to environmental science, so
And to Rob's earlier point, in the summer, if we all of a sudden know that those two new hires were, you know, just happened to be inexpensive, then there may be money sitting there, and at any point, you as a board can increase it to point two, because it's a bottom-line budget.
Yeah.
So once it's passed, it's how you want to spend it. We'll give you our recommendations, but it's totally your choice.
It's not, it's not subject to a, to a, to a community, you know, annual meeting.
Right.
If we have the money, we, once we have the money, we can just decide
Directive.
Make the change.
The next piece, I just wanted to make sure that, because Bud Combs will ask us again this month, the school board is in favor of a long-term lease for Four Lund Lane if we're going to move forward with the bond? And that we would work through a process to increase that rent to become, I won't say competitive, but to make a better, gain a better market share as related to other commercial property in the town. Because I think the budget committee really wants to know, is it the board's intent to, if the bond were to pass, to increase the rent?
I always felt this way, and I'll let each member chime in here. So I always felt strongly about not trying to compete with other commercial properties, because there's only so much we can offer for a commercial space without building a complete new building. So I always felt it was very important to keep it basically a deal that they can't refuse, to keep people there. It's, so I'm more interested, from a member of this board, is to make sure we're raising enough funds to maintain the property. Now, we're increasing, we're fairly increasing the square footage pretty substantially. I'm not sure if the current rate is appropriate to maintain it the way we need to. We're making a lot of changes there. I would, at this point, I would not be in favor of chasing a square footage cost that comes very close to other commercial properties. I want to keep it a great deal. I want to keep our great tenants happy, and I want to keep our sister districts happy with that rate. Now, when I think about the lease piece, I think I've kind of evolved a little bit there, because I didn't really, I always felt if we're given a great square footage rate, a long-term lease is superfluous, it doesn't matter. But I can see, in the light of a project where we're putting in sizable funds into that property, why stakeholders may see a long-term lease agreement as a good thing. So I would support that. I would support some, I suspect that the lease itself would be pretty legally technical. Timeframe, maybe limits to how fast we can increase rental. There might be all kinds of things in there. We did last month talk about a policy that would help the board, that would describe a period at which we have, the board would spend time looking at what is an appropriate rental square footage rate, or whatever that is. But right now, we don't have any policies governing that. So to me, a policy would be very simple, a couple sentences, as the board shall, you know, visit, look at rental properties of its facilities every three or four years, whatever it is. But I suspect the law, the lease agreement would be fairly technical legally, and we'd have to have our council write that out.
Correct.
And it would take a lot of socialization with the other districts to make them clear why we're doing this and so forth.
And we have had discussions with the other districts at their board meetings, and they are very much in support of it, just concerned about if the rate went up drastically, just worrying about their own constituents and their own budgets.
Sure, and understandable.
The rate doesn't have to change for the dollar total to change. So if we charge the same rate per square foot and we add 35% more square feet, we haven't changed our rate, but we have changed
It's going to go up.
Check.
Right, and I think, I think those are two pieces that I just want to make sure I clearly portray to the budget committee.
I want to remind, the history of the rate that we have now is something Rob initiated. I think we began studying it five years ago or something.
Maybe six or seven.
Twenty fifteen, actually. Well, he's been studying it a long time. But the comparisons chart that's at the end of the slideshow on facilities has, I think it was 2015 that we did the study, so it's four years. And we phased the rate change across three years, so as not to hit any district including our own too hard at once. But also, the rationale for changing it had to do with the increasing cost of maintenance. The building was aging, and the rent was $8,000 a year total. And that just wasn't enough to keep up with, and it had been $8,000 a year for like 15 years or something.
15 or 20 years. When you roll that into a square footage amount, I think my calculation was
It's like 25 cents.
$2.54 a square foot.
It's a good deal.
Right.
It's the best deal in town.
So the rationale for changing
I'll give you three.
The rate was, was maintenance costs. And that's, we also, you know, dumped that into the maintenance trust, and that, it was very clear that it was founded in need. So one way to approach, I think, in my mind, is, approach this, is we'll have a new facility, and the maintenance on it is likely to be cleaning, not the kinds of constant chasing of an aging structure. And so, you know, it may not be that we have the same exact maintenance formula.
What's your position on lease agreement?
I think I liked your analysis. I felt like, I feel like if we're going to make a 10- or 20-year commitment to this upgrade as a town, as a tax base, we'll ask our most likely tenants to just commit to the timeframe, right? And I agree with you, the language of the lease is likely to be
Yeah. Any input on the lease?
I agree.
I agree.
Alright.
I want to make sure that we're clear, and I guess, based on what you said about the policy that we want to write, of how often we would
The board has to go back and look at it.
Go back, look at it, and issue any sort of increase. I don't know that if there will be verbiage in it that will say it cannot exceed a percentage or a monetary amount per increase.
If we can get some sort of a
Because you said it was going to be really
Whatever lease period. If we, if we ask for a lease and it's signed, five years, we can't be checking comps every three years.
Right, well, if you're saying it's a long-term lease of 20, and you want to look at it every, you know, four or five years, you've looked at it, you've had three increases, and then you talk at that third one.
So they have to be coordinated.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think we want to get into a long lease agreement with a locked amount that we can, that we're limited, because we, we don't know what's in the future, what we have to deal with.
My suggestion would be if the bond passes, we go into construction. We know we're getting new square footage. Use the present rate, add that on to the existing cost for year one. That's it. During that year, we do a study. Let's say it was for 10 years, and then we build into, every three years, there'll be a study. You know, and it may not change, but I think we owe it to the community to do the study of what's happening. So that very quickly gets you to 10 years. And I think, you know, again, you're talking about a study done by the Hollis School Board, brought to the SAU School Board, and everybody will know the benefits that the facility is providing. So it's not like you have people paying a lease for unknown renters. You know? So I think
I'm wondering if some sort of wireframe policy would help the conversation at the board level, because I don't want other districts to worry about this, and worry about, oh, it's great this year and next year, but maybe the following year, it's going to be 75% increase. I want some sort of guardrails up so they don't have to worry about these things and feel like they're walking through a minefield.
Well, that's what I was kind of getting at, not nearly as eloquently as you, for the, for the kind of capping, the percentages. It was more for protection's sake, that's coming. I don't know.
So we would need guidance on that somehow, of course.
One thing that's been interesting to me over the years as a taxpayer in Hollis is how the Hollis Budget Committee, and I don't know how Brookline does it, has maintained a long-term study of specific properties that they've watched for
Yes.
A property valuation and
Random properties for 20 years.
So you could index, you could index a rate against CPI, you could index a rate against, I mean, it's not impossible to do
If the budget committee has some input around acceptable rates of growth, we'd love to hear it. You know, they are stakeholder, they look at numbers all the time. If there's best practices that they use, maybe that some of these things, these practices can be pulled into a facility study with reasonable limitations. So our other stakeholders don't have to feel like it's open-ended.
Arbitrary, right.
Arbitrary and open-ended.
And I'll reach out to our attorney, because we all share the same attorney, so there'll be a comfort level.
So the sense of the board is, we're for it?
Yep, okay.
How was that? In 35 minutes, we came back in after 45.
We can move to the policy memo.
Yes, to see what action the board will take regarding the policy memo submitted by the policy committee.
Okay, just give me one second. Okay. I motion to accept the second reading of policy EEA, Student Transportation Services.
I seconded.
There were no changes to this from the previous, from the first reading.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
This is the policy, the first policy.
The transportation one.
Yeah, I've entered it.
Okay, 500. Okay, five zero zero.
Okay.
Did you want to, is there a reason why we would need a third reading on the transportation services if it didn't experience any changes between one and two?
No.
Amy, I think there might be a reason why we were gonna discuss a possible change to the resolution of conflicts.
Yes.
Just based on a review that we did of the SAU policy.
Okay.
We might further discuss this.
But pretty.
Ordinarily, I'd love to adopt.
Oh, that's great, thanks for that insight.
Coming soon.
Coming soon.
We have a meeting near you.
Okay. I motion to amend Policy JFAA Admission of Resident Students in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided with the agenda, and accept the second reading as amended. Thank you.
Second, thank you, discussion.
Sorry, I was reading.
So, we just made a couple of changes. Here, you can see them, they're, they're tracked changes. The first sentence says, "All new families should register at school as soon as residency is established." We took away that kind of funny language that we had there that was kind of clunky. The second paragraph, we added the word certified in front of copy of the child's birth certificate to indicate that we need the copy that actually has the raised seal. And then we referenced the, the portion of the website, of the SCU forty-one website, where you can see a list of the acceptable residency documents. So those are the changes that we made for this reading.
I didn't think of this until too late to look at, go back in and look at our policy handbook or look up. How does this relate to homeschoolers and private schoolers, you know, kids who don't go to our schools? Because we're responsible for tracking every kid who's in the district, right?
No, they, they give you a one-time notice now, homeschool.
Right, so.
But it's, it's a one-time notice, so if they gave it to me in third grade, I don't necessarily know they're still with us in fifth, sixth, seventh, they don't have. So the homeschool regulations changed a number of years ago.
So all new families should register at school as soon as residency is established. So this imagines families have moved into town with kids who are school age, and they come to the school to register. Do they, do we need to say in this policy how homeschoolers register, or is that something totally separate?
I would say it's totally separate, because most homeschoolers have been homeschooling, and they know when I get the letter in the mail saying my son and my daughter will be homeschooled.
They send that directly to your office, they don't come to the school?
Correct, and then what we do is I turn it over to Bob's office, and we acknowledge that.
So you don't need to reference it here?
I don't, I don't.
No, and this policy is about admitting students to our schools. As opposed to tracking.
Okay, that's fine, I just, you know, I know they're obligated to do.
This doesn't necessarily cover the periodicity at which we can ask for recertification of residency? Is, is that a different, because I know we, I think in October, we touched on that. So that's a, is that something totally different?
Is that gonna be in the?
We, we don't, the recommendation, and jump in if you recall, different, the recommendation from legal counsel, if, if it was a three-year lease, you wouldn't be asking people until the third year of the lease came up, unless you had a, a concern or something was raised to you.
But typically leases are one-year lease agreements, and so as long as we are, which we are, you know, being consistent about our practice, then that's what we need to do to ensure that the students are.
So it's the lease agreement period that governs the time at which we ask for recertification.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I don't know, I do have questions and concerns, I don't know that I'm ready to speak to them today, so.
Okay.
I thought, I thought perhaps there would be more.
This is second reading, right? So we're, we'll have opportunity to come back and, when we get to the third reading.
Okay, yeah, I'll prepare my thoughts and.
And also, if you have something, you want to shoot an email to, to the committee.
Okay, I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, you know, if you have ideas, sharing it with the committees to, so that we can have that conversation offline and make recommendations for changes.
So we spoke, Brooke and I spoke after, kind of between our Policy Committee meeting and this meeting, so we can certainly address your comments, the comments you had, plus if you have any others at our meeting next week.
Your meeting is next week?
I think it's next week.
Okay.
I think so.
All right.
The seventeenth.
It's flying away.
I'll email the both of you.
Perfect.
Oh, and you can attend as well.
Okay.
That's what I had said before, yeah, I said, welcome to attend.
Okay.
September ninth.
Any other questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, or abstention?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so what is it, five zero one?
Four zero one.
I had one other question before we, do we, do we need a non-public tonight, do we? All right, before we take a non-debatable motion, I did have one other question related to the budget, the rounds. And, and, you know, I, I've said this before, I think the way we are presenting the rounds is a very nice, consumable way to see how, what changes we're making, what things were tough, in some cases, tough decisions, we have to make from one round to another. Is the Budget Committee gets these, does they get this document? So they're going on the journey with us and see the rounds, they're seeing the decisions that we're making. So it's not like we go through all this and just try to tell them a number, and so they see all the detail.
No, we, we have a formula for guidance.
Yeah.
We arrive at guidance, and what we typically do is we work through the process to see if we can arrive at that number. And they give us opportunities to ask for specific items for relief from guidance.
Yeah.
Which we take up on occasion.
Yeah.
And it has been a very thorough process, with, like I said, but there's still two significant meetings to go before they take a position.
Yeah, I think the one thing that jumped out at me, and I, I got caught up with the conversation when we moved on, was around the Windows ten issue. I'm seeing a very significant change from round one to round three. We're going from, looks like, am I looking at the right place here? Well, there, it's, I, I, I mean, at Hughes, we're, we, we had ninety thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-nine laptops, and by round three, we're now at forty-nine hundred, seven laptops, but we've added roughly thirty, or a hundred and seventeen Chromebooks to kind of balance that out. I, I, I mean, when I see that kind of shift, I, I'm just wondering, is that, is that really covering our need? Are the Chromebooks really doing what we need them to do? Are we running too, too thin on the, on the Windows ten laptops? I, I know what's driving that is our data security mandate that we have to meet, so.
Let, let me just give you a little explanation of that. We went to the Chromebooks and increased those numbers substantially, because those are the devices of preference for the teacher in the classroom. You know, we're, we're educating through learning stations, so each of us might have five in our classroom. They're the easiest device for a student to get on and into the topic, whether it be a program or something the teacher is utilizing. You'll notice right now, we still have in there twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for desktops. I have to be honest, I've been debating that, because I'm not sure if I have a fourth grader right now, if they're really gonna see a desktop when they become an adult. I don't think they are.
Yeah.
But the teacher loves the desktop, but my, my job is to prepare them for what's to come.
So you can either upgrade a desktop or buy a new Chromebook, is your point?
Correct, and if I buy, and then I look at it and I say I can get thirty-eight desktops or a hundred and seventeen Chromebooks.
Can I just say, my son, who's a computer fanatic, is working on his sister's five-year-old Chromebook. He's got it divided into Linux and Google, he does all kinds of stuff on it, to him, it's a magic wand, they're phenomenal machines.
So, so would those laptops be for student access, like in a computer lab or something?
Yes, they're typically gonna be in your computer lab, they're gonna be in the library, the Learning Commons. And then there are some, you know, some of the replacements for the staff laptops might have the same issues, but those are up top under the staff pieces. So what I'm really struggling with in the debate going back and forth is the desktop piece. Because I look at the Chromebook, you know, because I, I have the argument all the time, I look at the phone. I mean, for me, this makes phone calls, for my three sons, this is their computer that happens to take phone calls.
Right.
I mean, what they can do on this is.
Do they actually answer the phone, let's be clear?
No, no, so. They're giving signals only.
Phone connection.
But I mean, so it's, it's trying to get us as educators to evolve with what's coming out in terms of devices and that. So you might see those go down, but I can tell you, how we got there is Rich Raymond and Bill, to his credit, went basically room by room. And what are you using it for, what are you needing it for, and then tailored devices to meet the educational needs, rather than just buying a device to utilize.
So is there, like, obviously, you can get desktops that have tremendous processing power if it's necessary. Is that actually what these thirty-eight would be doing, is a tremendous amount of processing, or is this coming down to a personal preference?
This is coming down to, in my opinion, a, a personal preference. One of the, the pieces, like, because we're doing a computer technology rollout at the high school as well, and we are buying significant machines, because they're going to be doing engineering classes and things of that nature.
Matt, those, those need hardcore power for that.
This, this to me is, I think it's a preference, and I'm not saying that we won't stay there, because I'm not sure that they'll be obsolete, they won't be obsolete for many years. And the desktops that we have, we have utilized many ways, but I do, I do want the board to realize that there is a struggle going on. I just have a different educational vision of where technology is heading. To me, it's, to me, it's a point of service, not a lab. And Chromebooks lend itself to the teacher going to students, rather than students coming to a lab.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, there's a portability aspect here that I think is hugely valuable.
Right, right.
The one thing, though, is some kids need a larger screen or need, I mean, I can see.
So you can, so.
I can picture a role for some.
So you can get a hundred and fifty-dollar external monitor that you can plug, whatever.
Or you can get one in my basement for free.
Sure, also, or the parade household. But yeah, if you, if you're talking about needing, it's those one-offs, that's one thing.
I can see a role for some, right, but many.
So, do the, do the Chromebooks, are they going to offer the same level of security as another machine running Windows ten? I mean, does it meet the requirements of the mandate?
Yes, they absolutely do, oh, yeah, yeah. And, and then, from when you, when you talk about a money perspective, okay, I come back to, you almost have environmental science by changing to Chromebooks.
Right.
So that's why we were not done in the budget. The, the balancing act is, a staff member's costs go on forever, Chromebooks, you pay for it, and other than your electricity and those pieces, you're done with it. So that's, that's why the change is there, so.
Do we anticipate maybe more changes relating to these, the, the computers and laptops in round four, or do you think we're pretty much there?
I, I think the laptops are there, I, I, I'm personally struggling with the desktops.
Okay. All right, that's all I had, anyone have anything else related to that? I, I just left that on the table, I'm sorry. I, I left that, yeah.
You pulled the pen and threw it.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second. There is no dis. It's the highest priority motion, so I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.